Well, good evening. I now call this meeting to order of the April twenty second, two thousand and twenty York County Emergency Meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two thirty seven oh eight point two, Section A three. Before we get begin, we're going to start with a roll call where each board member will now state their remote location. We'll start with Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, I am at one 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 Ivy Arch, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three.
Thank you, Ms. Gerrots.
I'm at one hundred Leanne Court, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, I'm Mark Schaefer at one fifteen Catawba Court in Williamsburg, Virginia, two three one eight five.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt.
One zero five Kiskeyak Turn, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three.
Thank you, and I'm Jimmy Richardson. I'm from, I'm, I'm, I'm here from seven ten Shippoint Road, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two. So, thank you very much. This emergency meeting is just for the purpose of establishing a resolution to allow us to meet remotely as we're doing or getting ready to do. So, all board members are participating in this emergency meeting remotely through electronic communications pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven oh eight point two A three. Any public body may meet by electronic communication means without a quorum of the public body physically assembled at one location when the governor has declared a state of emergency in accordance with Virginia Code forty four dash one forty six point one seven. Provided that the catastrophic nature of declared emergency makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location and the purpose of the meeting is to address the emergency. Governor Norlem declared the state of emergency on March the twelfth, two thousand and twenty, and has limited public in-person gatherings to less than ten individuals, finding that COVID nineteen constitutes a real and substantial threat to the public health and safety. We are streaming this live video of our meeting through the Division YouTube channel for both the emergency meeting and also the special meeting that will be held subsequently after. The special meeting will also provide a public comment period where the public has had an opportunity to submit public comment earlier this week. That will be played during our public comment period. So, our action item is consideration of approval of Resolution twenty dash nineteen, a resolution to adopt the County of York's continuity of government ordinance. So, I have a motion and a second to accept that.
I move that we approve Resolution twenty dash nineteen, a resolution to adopt the County of York's continuity of governance, government ordinance.
I second.
All right, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Gerrots and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve Resolution twenty nineteen, a resolution to adopt the County of York's continuity of government ordinance. Mrs. Gerrots?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion is passed five to zero. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford. And I would just like to note that everyone at our meeting tonight, even though it doesn't look like it on YouTube, is wearing purple to celebrate the Military Child Month. So, we're all wearing purple, even Mr. Higginbotham. You can't see his real well, mine was blue. We are all wearing purple tonight to celebrate that. So, we're going to be starting our next meeting at five oh five. So, that's why I'm just kind of biding a little time here with that. Just so we can start at the proper time there. We have about one minute. But this meeting is adjourned, and we'll begin our special meeting in just about thirty seconds. Okay, it's now five oh five, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of April twenty second, two thousand and twenty, the York County Special Meeting. And we're going to start with another roll call for this meeting again to state their remote location. So, Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, Brett Higginbotham at one 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 Ivy Arch, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three.
Ms. Gerrots.
Oral Gerrots, one hundred Leanne Court, Court, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Eric Schaefer at one fifteen Catawba Court in Williamsburg, Virginia, two three one eight five.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt.
Sean Myatt, one zero five Kiskeyak Turn, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three.
Thank you, and I'm James Richardson from seven ten Shippoint Road, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two. So, I'd just like to mention that all board members are participating in a special meeting through the electronic communications pursuant to Resolution twenty dash nineteen that was just passed, authorizing board meetings through electronic communication without physically assembled, assembled quorum and in compliance with York County Ordinance twenty dash eleven during the pendency of the Ordinance twenty dash eleven and the COVID nineteen pandemic emergency. We are streaming live video of our meeting through the Division YouTube channel for both the emergency meeting and the special meeting. And the special meeting will also provide a public comment period with the public having had the opportunity to submit public comment earlier this week. And these, these comments will be played during our public comment period. I'd like to now read the York County School Division Mission Statement. The mission of the York County School Division is to engage all students to acquire the skills and knowledge needed to make the, make them productive contributions in the world. So, next I'd like to share some information about our pledge leader. Our pledge leader is a kindergarten student from Grafton Bethel Elementary School, and his name is Cooper Llewellyn. Well, he's a bright kindergarten student at Grafton Bethel Elementary School, and he's very responsible in everything he does. He demonstrates this responsibility by abiding by school rules and encouraging others to do so as well. Cooper walks quietly in the hallway, shares materials with others willingly, listens patiently while others are speaking, and raises his hand to ask and answer questions. He consistently completes his activities without a fuss, and he does all this and continuously encourages his classmates to do the same. Cooper is also very respectful. He is honest, polite, patient, giving, and understanding, and he shows these traits throughout the day without question or hesitation. He never lies, even if it may incriminate him, and Cooper always uses his manners by saying please and thank you or holding the door for a friend. He offers his time to his classmates whenever he can, whether it is in the classroom or on the playground. If he finishes his work early and sees another student struggling with an assignment, he is quick to step in and support them. If he sees a student playing alone on the playground, he immediately asks them to play with him. Cooper consistently shows his kindness toward his classmates and teachers each day. He is always the first to help when anyone needs an extra hand. Whether it is passing out papers or walking someone to the nurse's office, Cooper is a great friend and a great student. He's inclusive, nonjudgmental, genuine, and self, selfless. Each of these qualities and more are what make him such a great role model. Cooper truly exemplifies the core values of a Grafton Bethel Grizzly and as well as a great citizen. So, we will now show a video of Cooper as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, my name is Cooper Llewellyn. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cooper, and we'd like to thank Cooper and his family for sending us that video. Thank you. So, now we're going to move into our Seniors of the Month. And I would just want to mention before we go into that that our meeting and documents are available by logging in to our board docs through our York Y C S D website at YorkCountySchools.org. So, the following students are being recognized for their achievements, and I'll ask each board member to share a little bit about the students' accomplishments. And we're going to start with Bruton High School, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, it is my pleasure to announce the Senior of the Month for April two thousand and twenty for Bruton High School is Emma Wolf. She's a daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Tim Wolf. Intrinsicly motivated, dependable, and curious are a few words that describe Emma Wolf. Intrinsic motivation is a trait that Emma has possessed throughout her tenure at Bruton High School. Emma has taken the most demanding courses that Bruton has to offer. In addition, she has earned no less than a four point O GPA in all of her courses that she has taken at Bruton. Collectively, Emma has taken twenty-two advanced courses since her eighth grade year. One of the most intriguing aspects about Emma is that she is more concerned about the content that she learns rather than the grade that she earns. While she ranks number two in her class and she has a four point seven six one nine GPA, she always places learning above her grades. Emma is so motivated that she teaches herself new material outside of the classroom setting. In her spare time, Emma listens to BBC World News Podcast to learn about British politics, and she learns about the various genres of science. She truly has a passion for learning. Dependability is essential to being a great team player. Emma has been a reliable source for her peers at Bruton High School. Emma tutors her peers after school to ensure that they are performing well academically. Emma has participated in the band during her entire tenure at Bruton High School. She is a clarinet section leader and band president and enjoys watching the students enhance their musical skills. She is most proud of being a dependable leader for her peers. Emma has held several leadership roles at Bruton, which are president of the marching band, woodwind captain, section leader, scholastic bowl champion, captain, Model U N head delegate, and Math Honor Society treasurer. She is also a member of the French Honor Society, the Kakafani Collective, National Honor Society, and Chemistry Honor Society. Emma, Emma will proudly represent Bruton's class of two thousand and twenty as salutatorian. She plans to attend college next fall and has been accepted to William and Mary, the University of Virginia, Wellesley College, Middlebury College, and Dartmouth College. Congratulations, Emma, for being Bruton's high school senior of the month.
Cool, what a great write-up. And now we're going to move on to Grafton High School Senior of the Month, and Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, it is my honor or my pleasure to recognize Nathan Gung as the April Senior of the Month for Grafton High School. Nathan's actions, as well as his involvement in both school and his community, make him a role model for all Clippers. Nathan has taken advantage of all opportunities to excel while at Grafton High School. He has engaged himself in his honors courses, A P courses, and courses at the New Horizons Governor's School. His dedication to his academics cannot only be seen by the courses he has taken but by his academic honors, where he has earned highest honors each year and is now being recognized as Grafton Salutatorian with a four point seven nine GPA. While at Grafton, Nathan has been a part of our tennis team and served as team captain. He has also been a member of the debate team, Model United Nations, the Math Honor Society, the National Honor Society, and the Spanish Honor Society. Within his community, he is an active member of the Peninsula Chinese Baptist Church, where he plays the drums with the praise team, serves as a youth leader, and assists with the treasurer. Over the summer, he's dedicated his time to volunteering at both Centerra and Riverside Hospitals, and he has also given his time to the four H summer camp by serving as a camp counselor. Nathan shares his academic knowledge and time with others by serving as a kumon tutor. There is certainly nothing that Nathan cannot do. His care and devotion to helping others does not go unnoticed. Nathan can also speak three languages, Chinese, English, and Spanish. We are so proud of Nathan and his accomplishments and are delighted to recognize him as Grafton's April Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Nathan.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So, now we're going to move into our TAB High School Senior of the Month, and Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce TAB High School Senior of the Month for April, Nicholas Coop. Nick has distinguished himself in every possible way at TAB High School and is the valedictorian of his class. Remarkably, he attained a nearly perfect score on the S A T, a perfect score on the A C T, and perfect scores on all twelve of his advanced placement exams. In addition, Nick was named a National Merit finalist as well as a Jefferson Scholar at the University of Virginia. In light of his significant accomplishments, Nick remains humble and accessible to all his classmates. Despite his rigorous academic load, including governor's school, and the fact that Nick is a contributing member to every honor society and service organization available at TAB, he still finds time to participate in numerous extracurricular activities. For instance, Nick led the forensics team, debate team, scholastic bowl team, and the tennis team to state championship level contests. He also coached the middle school math counts team for the last four years. In short, Nick is the ultimate leader and teammate, making everybody around him better. Perhaps the best trait, though, is his ability to bring passion and joy to everything that he does. When he enters a room, his positive energy fills the entire space. He's inclusive and inspirational. He loves to learn, and he loves to help more. Nick has developed a strong interest in politics in addition to his passion for sciences, and he hopes someday to use this knowledge and experience to help shape our country's future. Nick has been a true role model not only for his peers but for the adults who have had the privilege of working with him over the last several years. He's a great representative of TAB High School, and we thank Nick for his inspirational leadership and exceptional personal example. Congrats, Nick, and go Tigers.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Myatt. Now, we're going to move on to York High School Senior of the Month, and Ms. Gerrots.
Yes, the Senior of the Month for York High School is Matthew Reed. He is the son of Daniel and Angela Reed. York High School is proud to announce Matthew Reed is our April Senior of the Month. Matthew can be described as a hardworking, caring, and focused young man. He has done well academically and excelled as a student in an international baccalaureate program. Due to his stellar performance in the classroom, he holds membership in the National Honor Society, New Alpha Theta, and the Spanish National Honor Society. Matthew has been actively involved in athletics and other extracurricular activities throughout his time at York High School. The Youth Volunteer Corps has been a major part of his high school career. He has participated in many events within the community and enjoys giving back. He's also been very active in the Youth Volunteer Corps Hampton Roads Chapter. He has held a leadership role as the treasurer for both the Youth Volunteer Corps at York High School and the Hampton Roads Chapter. Matthew has been a member of the York High School varsity football team since his ninth grade year and has earned second-team, three A, all-region status. Matthew, congratulations on being selected as the April Senior of the Month. We wish you much success in the future, and we know that you will continue to soar.
Thank you, Ms. Gerrots, and what great accomplishments that our Seniors of the Month have had. And I just want to share that we have, normally at a board meeting, we'd call them back up and have present them with a cookie text, an edible tweet, and a certificate, but we'll try to get that to them within the week. So, thank you very much. So, now we're going to move on to public participation at board meetings. And below was the criteria used that I'm going to read in just a second for sharing public comments. This information was emailed to all families, posted on the Facebook and Twitter, and posted on the Division website on the coronavirus page in the communications section. Also, they were informed the meeting would be live streamed on YouTube and TV forty-seven as well. First, school board policy, public comment will be accepted as part of the meeting. Citizens can address the board by leaving recorded voicemail at the following number, and the number at the time was eight three three seven one two seven, beginning at noon on Monday, April twentieth, and the public comment phone line will close at two P M. To provide public comment, they would need to call that number between the hours of twelve and two, Monday, April twentieth, and state their name and address, followed by comments addressed to the school board. The school board rules and procedures allow one comment per person and maybe no more than three minutes in length, with no more than thirty minutes total allocated for the comments. The thirty-minute period may be extended by the chair's discretion. At the chair's discretion, the chair reserves discretionary authority to rule a speaker out of order. So, we had, I believe it was four comments from what I understand, but we haven't heard them yet, so that's what we're going to do next, and we'll now play their submitted comments, citizen.
Lawrence Prinzel, one oh five Aquia Turn, leaving comments for the virtual school board meeting for Wednesday, April twenty-second. Comment question, the A P Virtual Virginia courses have not provided clear or consistent guidance on fourth quarter grading policy or if final exam will be administered. There was no opportunity also provided to increase third quarter grades given by the instructors. Not clear from either the high school or Virtual Virginia point of contact what policy is, which governs the district or not, whether final exams will be administered according to them. They said it's the district's decision. Or what would be the final decision on fourth quarter coursework and the grading policy since it is unclear if it's the district's final determination or Virtual Virginia. Thank you.
Melissa Wade, one 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 Hidden Lane, Seaford, Virginia, two three six nine six. Mr. Richardson, School Board, Dr. Shandor. The York Education Association would like to thank Dr. Shandor and his team for all the hard work managing faculty, staff, and students during this unprecedented time. It started with the foresight to close schools on March thirteenth for faculty preparations and continues to this day with a comprehensive plan for quarter four and beyond. The York Education Association is actively working with the Virginia Education Association during the COVID nineteen pandemic, ensuring that our members are safe and have the tools to continue their support of student growth for the remainder of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year. Going forward, crucial decisions will be made based on the governor's and York County's revised budgets. The Y E A, along with the Virginia Education Association, is working with the governor and the General Assembly to keep funding for K twelve schools, realizing that there will be budget impacts. The Y E A's top priorities are still, one, guarantee annual salary step movement, increasing salaries to be more competitive; two, protecting teachers' time to teach; and three, ensure professional treatment of employees. Thank you for remembering these important components when adjusting your budget for next year. Please stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Cook. My address is one oh four Adel Court, Yorktown. My husband and I are very disappointed in the continuity of learning plan for elementary students. The Division needs to ensure that fourth quarter material is taught to its students. While we understand the Division is concerned about equal access to technology for all learners, instead of determining the actual need and addressing those individual cases, the Division has chosen to effectively end the school year for all elementary students early. The district has no idea of the actual number of students that have technology access issues and therefore cannot say for certain that this is a major problem. Even if technology is an insurmountable problem, given the opportunity, I am confident that our teachers could come up with creative alternative means to teach the fourth quarter material. The amount of fourth quarter material is relatively small and can easily be addressed now with existing technology if the students have it or via alternate means if necessary. Since the Division is not going to fulfill their responsibility to teach our children, some parents are taking it upon themselves to teach their students the fourth quarter material and are even choosing to extend their children's learning further into the next grade level. This will ultimately lead to a wide disparity in students' content mastery next school year. Additionally, the Division does not have a plan to adequately address the fourth quarter material next school year as well as review due to this large gap in learning. Do we really expect our teachers to be able to fit five quarters of work into a four-quarter year while addressing regression and this huge gap in content mastery? This also does not account for the possibility of more school closures next year. The Division must have a plan now to either extend the school day, start the school year early, or have a mandatory summer school. Even if the Division needs to adjust or change that plan in the coming months, they need to let parents know now what the initial plan is for the next school year.
My name is Carol Bauer, and I reside at three fourteen Brook Lane in Yorktown. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the school board, Dr. Shandor, staff and community members. The York County School Division should be commended on the outstanding job that they have done in meeting the unprecedented spring that we have had. First, the Grafton complex fire, and now the COVID closure. York County leadership has been responsive and thoughtful in their efforts and actions, and it is greatly appreciated. Dr. Shandor and the administrative staff have relied on guidance from the V D O E as they directed the creation of continuity of learning plans, learning modules, and extensions to challenge students and keep them academically present. But another thing the closure has brought to light is the need to have a far-reaching and strategic plan that addresses the technology needs of our students, staff, and the school division. Staff has risen to the occasion, and we have embraced virtual teaching and contacting parents and students regularly through a variety of means. The innovative and instructional coaches should be particularly given kudos. They have provided support and help to staff through their training, video tutorials, and quite literally calls at all hours of the day and night to help support staff and the academic needs of our students. Going forward, the Y E A is calling on Y C S D to look for ways to narrow and not widen the digital divide. Low-income students and staff have less access to the technology needed as we both learn and work from home. Equity and social justice should be at the forefront of any decisions that are made so that some of our most vulnerable students and staff are not left out of opportunities. Administrators, be reminded that staff does not have to one-up each other, creating digital experiences that not all of our students and staff can experience and participate in. Prior to the COVID closing, Y C S D planned on pre-hiring teachers in a wide variety of positions to alleviate the unsold positions that we have this year in the Division. The plans are continuing, and the Y E A appreciates the efforts. As the Division hires staff for the coming year, we know that the very real need for mental support for our students increases. We have turned our normal upside down, so there is little doubt that the COVID closing has caused trauma for the students. We ask that if staffing changes and adjustments are considered, that the social and emotional welfare of our students be kept at the forefront. York County School Division should make every effort to meet the staffing recommendations set forth by mental health experts. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you for those comments. And Dr. Shandor, I believe typically when we have someone comment, we're like using the example of the gentleman in the first comment about the A P courses, we have a staff member reach back out to them to try to clarify those issues, correct?
Yes, we absolutely do, and someone will reach out to him. Thank you.
Perfect, just wanted to reiterate that, so thank you. So, now we're going to move out of public comments and move into our Capitol Projects Report. Dr. Shandor, would you please share remarks on our Capitol Project?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. So, Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Operations Officer, is now going to share a very brief Capitol Projects Report. Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson, Member of the Treasury, Capitol Projects Report for tonight. First, before I get to Grafton, which is going to be the bulk of it, I want to remind you that we are working on a enclosed breezeway at Dare Elementary School. The work there is almost finished. I don't have any pictures for you, but crews are there putting on the finishing touches, and that should be completed this weekend, and it's looking good. Onto the Grafton School Complex. There should be pictures now so that you can see the main switchgear. And I'll wait for those pictures to come up. So, that, I do want to remind the board of the main switchgear, which was ground zero for the problem that we had there, remember? There was a fire here that was contained to that room, and our fire suppression took care of that along with help from the Fire and Life Safety people of York County. And you'll remember also that we could not get in there and take that out for a time period and so that, but there was a time after everybody had gotten opportunities to inspect it where it was removed, and it was taken away and delivered to a third-party inspector. We don't expect results from that investigation until the summer. What the room looked like after removal of the main and electric and What the room looked like after removal of the main and electric and emergency switchgear. After we were able to get in there, then Belfour, our vendor, took care of the cleaning of not only this room. But also removing all the soot from the rest of the building. They finished their work exactly one week ago and here is that same exact room. With the new wiring that's already been pulled, awaiting delivery of the switchgear. So it's been cleaned, sealed and painted. And all of the cleaning for the building once again is done. The emergency switchgear then showed up on time on April fourteenth. And the main switchgear, which you see here, arrived this past Monday, four business days late. Now, due to a COVID closure in one of Eaton's plants, it is missing fourteen circuit breakers. And that will, those are expected mid-May, but they're not gonna delay the actual beginning of the installation. And so there should be a little bit of a delay, but we, there shouldn't be a problem in completing the work about the time that we expected. Takes about ten days to get the main switchgear installed and hooked up to all the lines that have been pre-pre run. But it's, and then we'll start to be able to test building systems downstream to make sure that they're all operational and to make any needed repairs there. But I would also remind the board that we have hired a third party group to run a commissioning of this. So they will be investigating and both the product and the installation. So that we have third party confirmation that we've got a good installation here on this product. And with that, that ends my report and I'm happy to take any questions.
Hey, any questions by board members? All right. Thank you. Does that complete your capital project report?
That does. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that report.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
Dr. Carroll. So now we're gonna move into matters by board members and I asked the board members if they have any comments or remarks to share. We'll start with Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, well, this covers March and what we've done so far in April. But lest we forget, March second was Read Across America Day. And I had the pleasure of spending the whole day at between Waller Mill Elementary School and McGruder Elementary School. I think I read about eight books and got to see a whole bunch of classrooms, had a great time there. And then on May, I mean, on March ninth, we did packet distributions. I was president at both Waller Mill and McGruder to pass out the first two week packets to all the kids. And also to be able to hand out the lunches and the breakfast that were being given to those that needed the food. And I did that again, food distribution on March sixteenth at McGruder Elementary. Got to see a whole lot of the staff, met everyone at McGruder and Waller Mill. Just had a, had a good time and met so many parents that wasn't the, it was, it was very interesting to see everyone that came out. And just to put it in perspective, at Waller Mill, there was only six parents that couldn't come and pick up packets. Which is pretty amazing when you're talking about more than three hundred and nineteen kids that were there. Then we had the pleasure, Laurel Geraltz and Dr. Shandor and I of going to Jackie Tesara's house on March thirtieth. She was a Bruton High School Senior of the Month for March and just had a great time reading to her at, of course, social distance. And presenting her with her award and her family that was there and, and anyone that came by and watched us. But it was an interesting time and a lot of fun. So the only other thing is anecdotal to where I see people in a grocery store and other essential places. And most of the comments have been totally positive on how the school division is handling the COVID crisis. And how good of a job that they're doing and how engaged the teachers are. As you can see behind me, I'm married to a first grade teacher and this is her classroom that I'm in right now. So that is it for me, Jimmy.
All right. Thank you. So now, Mr. Myatt.
Absolutely. I wanted to also acknowledge the TAB High Senior of the Month for March, Alexis Guido. We had an opportunity with, with Dr. Shandor and key administrators and select board members to visit her at her home. And go ahead and read Senior of the Month and, and go ahead and present some gifts to her. And I know how much we all greatly enjoyed the visit with her and, and her family members. We greatly appreciated that. I was out for most of March, but due to the stay at home spring, I had an opportunity to be back. And I wanted to just take this moment to acknowledge our TAB seniors in the class of two thousand twenty. As board members, we have an opportunity to participate in a variety of selection committees and things of this nature. And I'm frankly just amazed at the class of two thousand twenty and individual accomplishments. Whether they be academic, athletic, other extracurricular activities and school clubs and organizations. In fact, I was looking at packets this afternoon and again, specific to TAB, the, the class is, is very, very strong. And they, as, as we all know, they've demonstrated a great deal of a commitment, kindness and perseverance throughout the school year. So I did want to acknowledge again the seniors in the, in the class of two thousand twenty. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Myatt. Ms. Geraltz.
Yes, before we were so rudely interrupted by COVID nineteen, we were able to hold our York County PTA reflection ceremony and got to honor a lot of those kids as they participated in the. Our Arts and Education Program. It's always a really fun day for us to just really celebrate the kids and see all the wonderful artwork and the pieces they're putting together. And then it was just a great day to be able to honor the seniors of the month for last month. Again, social distancing, but watch neighbors just stop in the street and watch we were doing and celebrate. And just a really nice surprise and a nice way to honor them in these changing times. And then yesterday, we actually got to go and put signs in the yards of all the York High School seniors. And it was a very, very emotional day. Saw a lot of wonderful kids, most of them who were just waking up and were in their jammies and a lot of emotions. But it was probably the highlight of my month for sure, just being able to honor them in that way and just able to work on just. A great team of people who are trying to just do their very best to make these kids feel special at this time. So. Again, just trying to do all we can to make everybody feel special. So that's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Geraltz. Mr. Higginbotham.
Yeah, I wanted to just send a quick shout out to the high school bands in York County and some of the middle school bands right before the closure happened. Like two days before the concert assessment for our district was being run. And all of the high school bands were able to go and about half the middle school bands were able to go and they did their performance and they were awesome. And I just want to congratulate them for their hard work and their results that they had at that concert assessment. And then right after the closure happened, I also got to recognize the March Grafton High School Senior of the Month by standing a respectful distance away from everybody. Megan Fan. So congratulations, Megan. It was wonderful to see you. You had no idea we were gonna be there. We just knocked on the door, stood back and then. Read you all of the plethora of things, amazing things that you do. And it was just a fun experience to see. And then also I got to, to crash a virtual meeting during the break for Ms. Sorsich, who is the York County Teacher of the Year. So congratulations for all the hard work that you put in and we just had a great opportunity to recognize you during that, during that time. And I just want to send a real quick thank you to all the teachers and administrators for all the hard work and dedication you're showing and reaching out to. Teachers and students and parents during these unprecedented times. And likewise, I want to thank the parents and community members who have reached out to principals, teachers, to the school board office, to the administrators at the school board office and to the school board members. Just with questions that you would like to have clarified and then offering your support and thoughts and prayers. I just want to let you know that it's appreciated to hear from, from everyone who's all working hard for the best interests of all the students here in York County.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. And again, I'd like to reiterate some of your same comments and thank the division, team, the teachers, everybody that's come together to. Make everything happen during this crisis and the leadership of Dr. Shandor. I get a lot of positive comments through emails and in the public too as well. So great job. Keep up the great work. And I know it's very stressful. We certainly understand that. But last month, we did visit the seniors of the month and that was, that was great to read their accomplishments and they were so, so excited. Just to see the excitement in their eyes and just on their face, it was just wonderful to be able to do that last month. I've visited the Grafton Complex on numerous occasions with Dr. Shandor, just trying to keep up the date on that project. And what's going on with that, with the new equipment being delivered, the cleaning, which was just completed. It's, the, the school is clean as a pen. But I've been also been up to the school board office numerous times. As chairman, there's a lot of forms you still need to sign. Some of them can do electronic signatures. Some of them you have to do a regular signature with some of the grants and that sort of thing that we do. But I've been conversing with staff a lot here lately, mostly by phone and council on numerous topics and more recently the continuation of our school board meeting that we're doing right now. Just to, to set that up and, and get that working with the superintendent and council to see how we were gonna do this. So I did have a conversation and a call from Douglas Brown. He's with the Newport News School Board. He is actually our Codeworker, Region Chair for the BSBA. We conversed and had a conversation about our efforts in our division during this crisis and he wanted to learn and find out what our division's doing and what we may be wrestling with. And in the meantime, I was able to learn something from them and we're, we're struggling with the same issues, many of the same issues. With, you know, fourth quarter delivery of services, prom graduation, distribution of lunches, that sort of thing. So anyway, we have been in conversation with them. I was able to crash that same electronic meeting with the Teacher of the Year. That was great. She was so excited too. She had no idea. But again, the division is doing a great job. Keep up the great work. And now we're gonna move into our financial matters and Ms. Geraltz, you are up for that.
Yes, thank you very much. We have consideration of approval of claims certified for payment. We have claims certified for payment for the month of March, two thousand twenty. Significant expenditures for March are instructional related expenditures totaling forty eight thousand, six hundred and sixty seven. And included payments to Reed Smith for twenty eight thousand dollars for legal services. To Teach, ten thousand, five hundred dollars for professional development services. Results Global Coaching, ten thousand, two hundred dollars for leadership coaching. Payments for technology related items totaling approximately two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred dollars, including payments to Computer Discount Warehouse. One hundred and forty five thousand, one hundred and eighty four Chromebooks, Cox Communication, twenty four thousand, three hundred for internet services. SHIC Communications, twenty thousand, six hundred for work at the Grafton Complex in Bethel Manor Elementary. Virginia Business Systems, seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars for copier services. Payments related to operations and maintenance totaled twenty thousand, four hundred, included payments to Granger for ten thousand, three hundred for custodial supplies. Republic Services, ten thousand, one hundred for solid waste disposal. Payments related to capital projects totaled five hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred dollars and included payments to Heartland Construction. For three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars for work at the Grafton Complex. For Texo, two hundred and thirty eight thousand, eight hundred for work at Dare and Coventry Elementary Schools. Payments related to food service totaled two hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and included a payment to Sedexo for March food service operations. We then have consideration of approval of financial reports for March, two thousand twenty. Significant changes relating to the operating budget. For March revenues, local revenue through March, two thousand twenty is up by more than two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars because of an advance payment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our insurance company related to the Grafton Complex fire. That state revenue through March, two thousand twenty is up more than two point one million when compared to March, two thousand nineteen. The increase is due to approved state funding increases for FY twenty and increases in student enrollment. For expenditures, instructional expenditures are approximately two point eight million higher in March, two thousand twenty than two thousand nineteen. This is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for growth and the staff compensation increase for FY twenty. Significant changes relating to the food service budget. For revenues and expenditures, food service revenue through March, two thousand twenty is approximately one hundred and eleven thousand dollars higher than in two thousand nineteen. This is the reason of the increase in student enrollment and participation in the nineteen, twenty school year. Food service expenditures are approximately three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars less in March, two thousand twenty than in two thousand nineteen. This is due to the change in school schedules for schools impacted by the Grafton Complex fire and as a result of the division wide closure due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Also, a reduction of encumbrances for food service expenditures will be reflected in April's month end report to account for the decrease in sales through the remainder of the school year. See consideration of approval of Resolution twenty dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Resolution twenty dash eighteen requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than fifty thousand dollars. There are two items on the resolution. Replace the Grafton School Complex intercom, PA and clock for four hundred and ninety six thousand, seven hundred and sixty five dollars. Infrastructure Assessment and Learning Management System for a hundred and twenty six thousand, sixty two dollars. Mr. Chairman, I now move to approve Financial Matters is listed.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Before we take this vote, I did wanna, I did skip over a part in the agenda before we get into financial approval, financial matters. Mr. Bowen, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide a brief financial update. So I would like to hear from him before we pass it.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, members of the board and Dr. Shandor. This evening, I just want to share a brief update on the latest information we have on the FY twenty, twenty one budgets, also the twenty one, twenty six capital improvement plan. And then an update on the Y C S D Health Insurance Plan. As you know, the General Assembly is meeting today and they are considering several proposals that the governor made to the FY twenty one budget. At the time I was listening, they, they had not taken any action. They had postponed action, I guess, to the end. So we'll know more about the specifics. To the governor's proposals, once, once we get the calculation tool from the Department of Education. But to start with FY twenty, the, the General Assembly did pass a caboose budget bill in March, which updated the revenues for FY twenty. What we, what we knew last week was that the governor didn't propose any adjustments to the caboose budget bill. So we're not expecting any specific state reductions in FY twenty. However, on the, at the onset of the state closures, the state superintendent cautioned school divisions to monitor their sales tax revenue through, for the remainder of the year. So what does this mean for Y C S D? In our FY twenty budget, we have approximately thirteen point nine million dollars in sales tax revenue. And as of April one, we were expecting still to receive four point two million. So in heeding the state's caution, we've set aside one third of that four point two million, approximately one point four million dollars. We've kind of taken off the books, kind of expecting that we may not receive that. We also did something similar with lottery revenues. So in early April, school divisions were told that the pandemic would not, was not expected to have a significant impact on lottery revenues in FY twenty. But as a precaution, we instructed, instructed staff to, to reduce the supplemental per pupil funding, which is a specific line item in lottery revenue. And it's, it's the biggest portion of our lottery revenue. I instructed them to reduce that by seven hundred and ninety five thousand. So in total, we have reduced our state revenue by about two point two million dollars as a precaution. One thing I did want to point out about the lottery revenue, we were told that we, it shouldn't have an impact. However, just today, the State Lottery Department stated that March revenues are down twenty one percent. And if you recall, the, the closure was only for two weeks in March. So twenty one percent, I think, I'm sorry, is twenty eight percent. It's, it's significant for that period of time and they're expecting that those revenues decline. So I think it was a, I think it was a good move to, to reduce the lottery revenue. However, we need to have conversations with the state to see if we need to come back and revisit that number if we need to go a little higher. On the local side for FY twenty, Dr. Shandor and I spoke with the county administrator yesterday. And we feel confident at this point that there shouldn't be any cuts in local funding for FY twenty. However, to ensure that we do in the year with a balanced budget for FY twenty, the superintendent has enacted several budgetary cost saving measures until further notice. We've frozen all non-essential and vacant positions. Does it mean that some positions won't be filled? But if they are filled, it will require the approval of cabinet. HR is scaling back the number of new hires required for growth for our FY twenty one budget as a precaution. We've frozen all non-essential spending. So with the schools closed, there should be a reduction in the need for materials, supplies and equipment. IT is delaying its normal refresh of technology until we receive additional information from the state and local government for next year. And, but it's likely that some of this will be essential. We've frozen all conferences and overnight travel. We've frozen. We've frozen all conferences and overnight travel. We've frozen most textbook purchases. However, there were, uh, some textbook purchases on the, on the resolution. Um, and this will position us that if funding is available, we'll use any of your dollars to purchase those textbooks. And we've frozen, um, most of our C I P projects at the current levels. And then what this means is that projects in the design phase will be completed, but will not advance to the A and E phase. And projects in the A and E phase will be completed, but not advanced to the construction phase. We do have a couple of projects that are in the construction phase, but they're year two is starts in F Y twenty-one. And we, I'll talk a little bit more about that because we do have some challenges with the C I P and F Y twenty-one. For the F Y twenty-one budget, um, as I mentioned, the governor released, uh, some proposed amendments to, to the general assemblies. Finally, adopt a final adopted budget. And the governor had stated that a number of the initiatives adopted in that final state budget would, uh, would not be funded. This includes funding for the two percent compensation increase, funding to increase, uh, guidance counselors. Additional funding for at-risk students and funding to expand school lunches. So for school fund, I think, uh, we've been advised that our F Y twenty-one appropriation increase of one point one million dollars will not be provided. In addition, the county has instructed us to further cut our budget another five hundred thousand dollars. So a total of one point six million dollars will be, will, uh, will be removed from our F Y twenty-one budget. On the local side and on the state side, right now it's about five hundred thousand dollar reduction. However, there's still a lot of known about the economic, uh, impact of the state closures. So certainly if the closures are extended, then we should expect that, um, further reductions would be possible from, uh, from the state and local governments. Um, so at this point, staff is preparing to rewrite the F Y twenty-one budget. Uh, we're waiting for that calc tool, but we're, we're hopeful that, um, we'll have a complete update at the May work session. As, as many of you know, there was some federal stimulus money that was provided. This is, um, federal stimulus or CARES Act funding for school divisions. And Y C S D is expected to receive about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, there's a lot of flexibility that comes with this money. So, um, we'll be providing an update at the May work session and how to incorporate those funds in our F Y twenty-one budget. For the F Y twenty-one, twenty-six capital improvement plan, where members will recall that in January you approved this plan. The county administrator advised us that our C I P will be funded at one million dollars in debt service beginning July one. Um, our, our request and what was approved by the board was twelve point seven million dollars in debt service. So we have a lot of work to do and prioritize. Um, so Dr. Dr. Carol, myself and Mr. Shareheart have been meeting to prioritize those projects. And we'll have a, an updated C I P plan for you to consider at the May work session. And one final topic this evening is health insurance. Uh, as many of you know, we've experienced significant increase in our health insurance cost this past year. Staff from H R and finance had been meeting with our consultant, U S I, to identify the contributing factors. And over the past several months, our consultant performed a detailed analysis, analysis and comparison of our costs, our utilization. And provider discounts under Cigna and Anthem, and Anthem was our previous provider. This analysis determined that Y C S D is paying more for health insurance under Cigna than it was with under Anthem. And this is due to several factors. Uh, provider discounts with Cigna are less than the provider discounts, uh, with Anthem. Utilization has increased, so our cost with Anthem would have increased had we stayed with them. But they would not have increased at, at, at the current level, um. Hey, at the, we, they would not have increased at the level they, they have increased with Cigna. So, um, it's something that we are looking into, um, specifically, but it appears that some of the services and the procedures. Used by Y C S D employees come at a higher expense under Cigna than they do Anthem. So U S I is currently working with Cigna to see if there are options to mitigate these differences in costs. But if there is no solution, um, I, I will say it may be that we have no other choice but to go back out to bed. So we're still gathering this information. Expect again to have a full update at the May work session. And that concludes my finance update this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any questions from board members to Mr. Bowen? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, did, what, did you, could you repeat? I think you glitched out for a second when you were talking about the amount, um, that the county is telling us that we need to take out of the C I P.
Yeah, so the, the, the county has told us that they will provide a million dollars in our C I P for next year. And that's down from what we request is twelve point seven million.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at the board of supervisors, um, meeting that happened last night, Mr. Morgan provided a presentation related to the operating budget. Um, what you just heard from Mr. Bone, as well as capital improvement update. And essentially it's one million dollars for next year. Everything else was essentially pushed back a year.
Good.
All right. So now we're going to move on. We have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Um, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Groll and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the financial matters as listed. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Now we're going to move on to our consent calendar and I'll go over the list briefly. Um, approval of personnel actions, uh, approval of Park Carl Perkins grant application for F Y twenty-one. Approval of the twenty twenty-one annual plan for titled six D federal funding. And the approval for instructional materials adoption for selective elementary and secondary courses, which were atmospheric science. A P chemistry, discrete mathematics, ecology, history, social sciences, six and seven, and K three eight mathematics. Also consideration of approval of minutes for special joint meeting on February fourth, a special meeting on February tenth, a regular meeting on February twenty-fourth. And special meetings on March ninth, March nineteenth of twenty twenty. And there were two meetings actually on March nineteenth. There was one at four thirty and one at five, both of those meetings. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Yeah, I moved to approve the consent calendar as listed.
My second.
All right, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Maya to approve the consent calendar as listed. Mrs. Groll?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Uh, next are, are action items. We have none. Policy discussion, we have none, but policy first reading, we do have. Uh, for proposed changes to policy, G D Q National Transportation Safety Board, bus driver, physical performance, self-report recommendations. Dr. Shandor, do you have additions to, uh, report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. There's no additional changes since Dr. Vladu presented that at the March nineteenth meeting.
Okay. Um, then we have a first reading of policy G B and G B A and J F H A extending investigation timelines. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, again, no additional changes since Dr. Vladu presented that on March nineteenth.
So now we have policy reading, second reading, which is an action item, consideration of a motion to approve the suspension of school board policy. I K F A superintendent regulation, I K F A school board policy, I K F D. Uh, superintendent regulation, I K F D and section one of the school board policy, I K F. And the school board policy, I U V throughout the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. So Dr. Shandor, do you have remarks to share on this?
I do. So, um, Ms. Skinner, our chief academic officer and Ms. Barry, our deputy county attorney have been working together. Uh, regarding this update. So I'll turn it over to, I believe, Ms. Skinner first and then Ms. Barry, if you can support and answer any questions.
Certainly. Good evening, Chairman Richardson and members of the board. As you know, on March twenty-third, all Virginia schools were closed for the remainder of the school year. And because of these closures, school divisions were not able to meet the statutory requirements of the hundred and forty clock hours of instruction. For earning a standard credit or the requirements for awarding a locally awarded verified credit. On April second, the Virginia Board of Education approved two emergency documents. Which provided allowances for school divisions to award standard credits and locally awarded verified credits. In order for our school division to access these emergency guidelines, the V D O E recommends that school divisions su- suspend their current policies. And the following policies and regulations are being proposed for suspension until the end of the current school year. Um, and those were, uh, shared just a few minutes ago by, uh, Chairman Richardson, but I'll just provide a very quick, uh, reason for each of those. Policy I K F A, as well as the superintendent's regulation. Uh, normally a student has to, um, should, has to pass a class and the S O L to earn a verified credit. This emergency document changed our policy to awarding a verified credit to a student if they pass the corresponding high school course. And demonstrate the standards, competencies and objectives of a majority of the course. This still does require a three-person panel review. Policy I K F D, as well as the superintendent's regulation for that policy. Uh, in most cases, students must complete a hundred and forty clock hours of instruction in order to award a standard unit of credit. And our policy allows the board to waive this requirement and award it using three different pathways. The emergency document allows us for seniors to award, uh, a student who demonstrates mastery of the majority of the standards, competencies and objectives of the course. And it can be determined based on a student's grade as of March thirteenth. And for our other students who are taking credit bearing courses, mastery is determined by a locally awarded measure to include the student's grade as of March thirteenth. Policy I K F, section one, um, does run counter to the Virginia Board of Education's emergency guidelines. Um, so we are, um, looking to suspend that policy until the end of the year. Section two would remain in effect. And then policy I U V, this policy requires that we issue interim, interim progress reports to all students. And V D O E does recommend at this time that we are not grading student work during this closure. Therefore, it is unlikely that we may issue in-roms during quarter four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Ms. Barry, was there anything additional you needed to add?
No, um, Ms. Skinner covered it very well.
Okay, good. Any additional questions from the board? All right. So I'm just going to read this again. So, uh, a board member doesn't have to read the specifics. They can just, they'd like to make the motion. But do we have a motion to, um, approve the suspension of school board policy, I K F A? And superintendent regulation, I K F A. School board policy, I K F D and superintendent regulation, I K F D. Section one of the school board policy, I K F. And the school board policy, I U V through the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
I will make that, uh, motion.
All right. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mrs. Grolls to approve the motion regarding policy suspension. Ms. Grolls?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And next we have our report from our superintendent, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I, I just want to, um, I have a few comments this evening. Uh, the first thing I want to do is acknowledge our, um, I T department for, uh, being able to put this meeting together. We have a lot of people obviously working behind the scenes to make this happen. And we know it took several practice, uh, runs for a few of us to, to make sure that we could make, to pull this off. So certainly appreciate all the work that our I T department went through, um, and, and many of them who put together the presentation and, and, uh, practiced with, with several of our team members to pull this meeting off. So again, want to thank all of, all of them. Also want to thank, um, all of our leaders in this division for working hard through this crisis. Um, people have spent a great deal of time, again, unprecedented situation we have here to quickly pivot to, um, having meetings online. And still pushing work along and, and creating for what's best for our students. Um, I do want to acknowledge the five of you. You have been wonderful support, uh, and advocates for, for the leadership in this county. As well as for our teachers and supporting them as they're working through everything. So kudos to the five of you for the support that you provide and the questions that you ask. Uh, me and our, our other, our cabinet members to, to push ourselves outside the box of thinking to make sure we're, we're addressing things for our students. Um, also want to, um, mention the county staff. Um, Mr. Morgan has, has been available for us. He has been, uh, open with us. We've had very open and honest communication, uh, and problem solving throughout this situation, not only this situation, but the fire that we had in February as well. Um, so he's been really supportive as well. So a number of staff members who, who I can't say enough about. Um, so want to move into a few other topics. One, I want to thank Cheryl Parr, who's a associate director for us and our Sedexo team in preparing the meals, the meal to go bags. And we do that at McGruder Elementary. You're kind to have high school on Mondays and Thursdays. Want to thank our food service team for serving our students, um, in such a, an efficient way. And, uh, it doesn't matter the weather. They're out there all the time and you can see them out there waving people in and, and making sure that our families are taken care of. I also appreciate our operations staff. We've had a number of our folks down at the, um, in the maintenance area copying our learner plans. Um, they've copied them. They've packaged them. They've delivered them to our schools. Um, they work through the weekend, day and night to get that, that information done. So we certainly appreciate all of the work that, that they've done. I do want to let the board and the community know that each week I participate in a bi-weekly virtual meeting with our state superintendent. Uh, there's a hundred and thirty-two school divisions in the state. Um, we have a pretty lengthy conversation and update from him. And he also uses that time to have his team answer questions that we submit to them. We also have, um, a meeting with regional, our region two superintendents. There's fifteen of us. And we've worked, uh, relatively closely throughout the last month and a half. Um, as we're all grappling with finances, um, we're grappling with the best and best instructional practices. Um, again, proms, graduations, all of those types of things. And, and certainly all of our intentions are to do, to do everything we can for, for our kids. Okay, uh, I guess finally, and, and most importantly, well, there's two more. One, I did want to let the board know that, uh, Dr. Aaron Butler, who is an associate director with us, I'm sorry, director with us as well. Um, in school administration, he is participating with members from the region. So all their fifteen school systems in, in a ongoing conversation about graduation. So he's working with, you know, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, Williams, um, Williamsburg, James City, Newport News, Hampton, et cetera. On, uh, there, there's a think tank sort of group trying to figure out timing of when this thing ends. And how can we pull off a graduation for our seniors? Our heart goes out to all of them during this year. It will certainly be a, a year that, that those kids won't forget. We won't forget either, but we certainly want to make sure that we, um, you know, provide recognition to them in a way that, that we know that they deserve for all the hard work they put in. So Dr. Butler is leading that charge and we'll be, we'll be providing some updates to the board, um, soon as well as, as far as that goes. Finally, I want to thank all of our principals, our assistant principals, our counselors, our teachers and staff. For the work that they've done over the last, um, however many weeks it's been at this point, five or six weeks. Um, working from home, their dedication, reaching out to students, um, reaching out to our families to make sure they're taken care of. I can't say enough about the leaders we have in the division, um, teacher leaders. All of these folks have done everything we've asked of them and, and we couldn't, I couldn't be more proud of them. We have a number of committees that we're working on right now. Dr. Carol is leading a restart group, depending on when that restart will be. So he has a, a team working on that. We'll be providing updates in the upcoming weeks to the board and, and our staff related to that. Um, we're also looking at devices and trying to, um, we have a task force that he's also developed with that. In collaboration with instruction to work through, um, some problem solving and looking what are some of the options that we have for some next steps as far as that goes. We're already thinking about summer school. We're already thinking about the beginning of the school year for next year. So, um, thank you all so much again for your support. And with that, it concludes this superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and especially for sharing those last comments about our plans for the future. So, uh, at least the public knows where we're at, that we're, you know, we're not just focusing on fourth quarter here, or we're continuing to move ahead. Um, so thank you for that. So our next work session will be tentatively held on Monday, May the fourth, and the details will be shared at a later time once they're confirmed. And I hope everyone has a great week. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.